Mark Mata, he has come back safe to us.
Yay.
I think his new nickname is now Four Fingers. But if anybody knows, Mark Mata was in a serious accident. I didn't know it was near fatal, but.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I thought that was kind of crazy, but the thing is, is that his son acted very good. So you know what? Prayers work and we're thankful for you being back.
Thank you.
And two, we do have one of our council members, Mr. Vasquez, who is in Vegas, who I just got a report, he is up $300. So let's just keep praying that, you know, that money keeps raining from the heavens. And so.
Or the slots.
Play the slots, yes. So I'm going to call this meeting to order of the city council work session being July 25, 2023, 3:02 PM. Item two invocation will be given to us by Councilmember Thompson. Anybody wishing to join us in the invocation can do so by standing up.
Heavenly Father, bless this day. Bless our city, whatsoever our first responders, bless this council. And thank you for allowing Mark to return home safely. And that he was fortunate enough to have his hand put back together. Lord, be with us as we deliberate today and come up with good decisions for the citizens of Odessa and the city of Odessa. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Be seated. We're going to go to item three, Discover Odessa Quarterly Report. Ms. Monica Jean. Can everyone in the back hear us? We're good? We're good? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. And this will be Discover Odessa's quarterly report for April through June of 2023. So as you can see, for the month of April, May and June, what the total economic impact was for all three months and that added to $4,816,876. We assisted 46 total groups, 34,088 total attendees and 5,084 total hotel nights. You can see that, this microphone is falling, sorry. What the attendees by the group was, you know, how many the meetings had for attendees, special events and sports, and then the hotel nights by group, as well as the economic impact. Any questions on that page?
No.
Okay. These are the groups that are reflective of those three months. You can see those in April and of course their color coordinated with the sports, the events and the meetings. And just to highlight just a few, I won't go through all of them, but in April, the martial arts event produced 330 room nights and saw over 1,000 attendees. The economic impact for that event was 205,670. This event has grown. It was previously held in Barn G, but it was busting at the seams. So they were able to host it this year at the actual Coliseum and had a place for the attendees to sit up in the bleachers. In May, the gorilla heavy hitters fight night had 490 room nights and had over 1,900 attendees and brought an economic impact of $317,713. They are also moving their upcoming event that's coming in September to the Coliseum to accommodate the demand that they are experiencing. So Discover Odessa is working closely with Aram's, I think it's Aram Sanchez? Aram Sanchez. And so anyway, we're helping them financially to secure that, the Coliseum, and that's going to allow them to bring more visitors and attendees for that event. In June, as you know, Odessa hosted the Texas Chamber of Commerce Executive's Annual Conference. This brought in 356 room nights and had approximately 200 attendees. The economic impact for that event was 195,684. The city received a lot of positive feedback from across the state. And this type of positive experience gives our sales team a great boost when we're making sales calls for other conferences wanting them to be held in Odessa. Any question on any of those events?
Can't see any questions.
Next, these are some of the upcoming events that Odessa's, Odessa will be hosting and Discover Odessa is assisting with in some type of way. Team Texas Economic Summit will be held in late August here in Odessa. Amanda has been working closely with the Odessa staff here in Odessa and the state representatives to coordinate all that is taking place that those a couple of days. We're expecting 70 attendees and six consultants. Odessa benefits from hosting this event. Tom Mansky, our local economic development director, will get to spend a half a day with each of the consultants on a one-on-one basis and have the opportunity to show them around town and hope that we will recruit, recruit more business to Odessa. Also in August, at the very bottom, the West Texas Longhorn Association event that's being held. This is new to the department. I'm not sure if they've held it here in Odessa or not, but we're expecting about 120 room nights for this event and about 200 attendees. It is a showcase of cattle that is for both the buyers and the sellers. And it will also be hosted at the Ector County Coliseum.
Manure.
Yeah.
What was the name of that organization again?
That's the West Texas Longhorn Association, Mayor.
Hook 'em.
Any other questions on the upcoming events? And of course, we'll report on these on the next quarterly report in October. Okay, our marketing report. Ashley Flores continues to do a fantastic job on our social media. She's growing our followers, followers on Facebook and Instagram. You can see some of the top performing posts. As far as the local insider blogs, she does make a blog each month and those are the four, the four that are shown on there under featured blogs are what was reported this last quarter. But the top blogs overall were single the mild, top 10 restaurants, Odessa mural guide and the spring bucket list. And then our kiosk that lives at the conference, the engagements are going up. So that really does give us a reflection of how much more traffic is going on there at the conference center. And you can see our website and how they're performing and where are most of our visitors on our website, of course, are coming from Odessa, but also interestingly Dallas, Austin, Midland and Lovick. Okay. Next, these are just a lot of examples that Ashley puts, puts out there for our digital advertisements. We have this, this last quarter, we were with Texas Monthly. Multi View, just so you'll know, Multi View are the meeting planners that the sales team reaches out to, to try and bring in conferences. Of course, the social ads, the billboards, those two underneath, that's the, we had put some billboards in other communities for the mural fest, as well as the AAU track and track regional qualifier. Print advertisements, again, you can see all of the examples of what Ashley has done to promote Odessa and the Texas State Travel Guide, travel host, Texas highways and all of the rest that are shown there. At the very end, that howdy all, that was a new, a new brochure that Ashley created for the downtown footprint that came from the TCC conference. A lot of times those people that are holding conferences there, they want to go to another restaurant or go shop. And so I know that we, our team reached out to Elizabeth, Elizabeth Prieto, and she kind of gave them the list of what all was down there. And so it was just a fun little brochure that was handed out to the attendees. So we're going to keep that for sure on hand and pass those out.
Monica, real quick.
Yes.
Basin Sports Complex, softball baseball fields?
Yes, sir. So that's, that one right there where it says explore, eat and play down there in the bottom next to the howdy all, that is at the concession stand. And so it's just a big advertisement there on the building of the concession stand. And so when they have tournaments out there or anything that goes out there, people will see that QR code and they can scan that to get a list of our, either our dining guide or visitors.
But is there a Basin Sports Complex?
The UT Permian Basin Sports Complex.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, UTPB. Yeah, Basin, it should say UT Basin, UTPB Permian Basin Complex.
But, but there is something actually named Basin. Basin Sports. It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Terrible vision. Okay, this is a lot right here, but just so you'll know, this is a list of the different things that our team is collectively involved when 531 cell, total sales calls were made in this last quarter, 48 meetings attended and 21 events attended. So those are just some highlights that our team did through that quarter. And then our sports event recruitment program, you can see, these are the groups that Teresa worked with. We were allotted by you all $80,000. You can see we have 4,303 left. We have one group that's requested 5,000 that they just recently held their event, the North Texas PGA Junior Golf Tournament. And so what money that we are not able to accommodate with that 5,000, Teresa will be looking to her sports service line in the DO budget to see if we can cover that 700,000. So she does have budgeted groups in there. If those groups do not come through, then she will, you know, pick up that difference with the DO sports line. And last but not least, in case you all did not know, Odessa will be one of the five larger cities on October the 14th to experience the annual solar eclipse. Discover Odessa, we were reached out to by the state. The state did want to know how many hotel nights we had, or how many hotel rooms we had here. The five cities that will experience the greatest view of that will be us, Midland, San Angelo, Corpus Christi and San Antonio.
So are we getting the full?
We're getting the full.
I didn't think we were.
We are.
Because I, I, I want to put reservations in Curville.
Well, you shouldn't. You need to be here.
Well, I saw it here, but I didn't.
Yeah, no, we are on, if you go on there, we are, have a direct path.
Just save me some money.
Yep, we're on that path. So anyway, just so you'll know, Ashley and the DO staff have been working to gather information from hotels on special rates that might be occurring that weekend, any restaurant promotions that are happening and other special events that are being held around the city. We have talked to UTPB. UTPB is hosting some representatives from NASA here and other organizations. They will be launching some balloons to measure various scientific information. So all of that information will live on the Discover Odessa website. DO is also ordering 5,000 eclipse glasses to hand out to our hotels for any guests that might be staying there over the weekend. So we'll be passing out those to all the hotels. And Ashley has also created a fun playlist of songs in honor of this event. And the main one is Johnny Cash's Ring of Fire. So if you want, I can sing, love is a burning thing. So anyway, get on there and check it out. Total Eclipse of the Heart, all of that's on.
There's a generation, I don't even know who Johnny Cash is.
Yeah.
And they're all working for her.
I know, exactly. Yeah, I don't know if they, they had never heard Total Eclipse of the Heart. So that's pretty funny, the generation.
Monica, how does this, this date?
So it's on October the 14th. It's on a Saturday.
To the oil show.
So the oil show is the following week. So we may have.
I knew it was one way or the other.
Yes, sir. It's the following week. It's the 17th through the 19th. Is that right, Amanda? Yeah. So it'll be that following week. Any questions? I won't sing anymore for you, I promise. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item four, discuss economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation, Standard Industrial Manufacturing Partners. Tom?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
I'm Chris Crowe today.
Yes.
Better looking.
No question about that.
At least in my mind. Now, Chris is celebrating his daughter's birthday and so he's in Granbury. And so I'm filling in for him if you don't mind. The first item is Standard Industrial Manufacturing Partners. An economic development agreement has been drawn up. I would like to point out though, that we're going to recommend a change before it comes to you for a vote at the next council meeting. And I will say already, the, the ODC board has, has approved the agreement. But the, our new council, outside council, they put a minimum of $80,000 on the jobs that are going to be created with this project, which you will see on page three of 16, section three definitions, under item G, full-time equivalent employment. On their application, they did not specify the jobs individually. What they did is they gave us a lump sum for payroll for the 22 jobs that'll be created. And they did inform us, a couple of those jobs will not be, especially in the office jobs, will not be $80,000 jobs. So I've sent an email, I copied Dan and Christina on it. I sent an email to the attorney, haven't heard back from him yet. But we're going to get that changed to how it's been on all our contracts in the past with the, with the lump sum. Although we would love to have $80,000 a year jobs, it's just that he, he's, not all 22 of those will be that.
You're going to get an adjustment to how many will be?
Um, well, in here, they have their payroll amount, the total, but they, but they also put the, the attorney put the requirement of earning a minimum of 80,000 per year.
Okay.
And so typically what we've done is we've taken the, the total 963,551 and said that you will make that every year during your audit. So it's, it's a simple change. But this is a company, they're here already. It'll be located, the project's on Third Street, which the address is in there. But the recommendation was to provide them with a grant on a five-year contract for 900,500, excuse me, 951, I hate reading the amount.
963,551?
Yeah, let me look at the number and not try to read the thing.
Yeah, 963,551.
Yeah. $900,551.82. There you go. And as y'all well know, most of our contracts are five-year and we pay one-fifth at the end of, of each year of the contract after an audit has been conducted to confirm that they did what they said they were going to do. And you're also see what they're proposing in here. It's a $2,565,000 capex. And then like I said, they're going to hire 22 employees with a additional, with a new payroll, what I mentioned just before. So.
Okay.
But we're going to, wanted to share that with you. If you have any questions about that particular contract, I'll be happy to answer them. The, the one change we have made before the deadline to get it to y'all for the next council meeting would just be that payroll deal. And the numbers don't change at all. It's just how they're presented in the requirement.
Can't see any questions?
And the rewriting on that will, for the bucket of businesses that were in there, will be eliminating anybody then?
Uh, I, I think they indicated they have a couple of people that make the 80,000 minimum, but they're going to have some salespeople that, you know, they may be making them in five years, but starting out, you know, in a new position, they may not, depending on, you know, the rolodex they bring to the table or whatever you want to say with their, with their pipeline. But they did indicate that several of those jobs will not be at the 80,000 minimum level.
Two, three.
And I think that this gentleman, he does a lot of, he represents what, over 48 EDOs in the state? A lot of them are around the DFW metroplex and they tend to do that over there. I, I've, I've worked in economic development. I mean, you've got Plano, Frisco, cities like that. You know, we'd love to have 22 new 80,000 minimum jobs. Little different out here.
Yes, it is.
So. Any questions?
Can't see any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do you want me to stay or sit down and get back up and walk up?
Oh, do you have another presentation?
You have the next one.
Oh, right here.
There you go.
It's not, it's not on the agenda right here. Oh, yes, it is. Yeah, go ahead.
We normally don't trust two agenda items to Chris, but since I took his place, we wouldn't. No, I'm kidding.
Attention span is short.
There you go. This is GCC, they're, they've been here, they're in, they're in the community, been here for a long time. They bought the C-Mex plant out of Murphy. I think they bought that thing in 2017. They are doing, at the time of application, they described it to us as a $400 million expansion and modernization in meeting with their CFO about three weeks ago, even though in the, in the application, it's 400 million, they, it's going to be closer to 800 million when they're done. Some of that's inflation, some other things that have incurred. They've also, I think in their original app, they weren't including, they're going to put in a carbon capture element for what they do out there in their manufacturing process. But they, they are proposing, or they proposed to us 400 million. They currently have a payroll 104 full-time equivalent jobs that they're going to retain of $7,724,460. They plan on adding five during the term of the contract, five jobs. They'd actually like to add more, but in their experience in this environment, they find it tough to compete with oil and gas on some of their jobs. But they plan on, they feel they can do the five. This will take place at 16501 West Murphy Street, Odessa, Texas. They've actually started out there, started the project. They're, they're adding a third kiln. Right now, everything they produce is just going to oil and gas industry. They want to be able to fulfill opportunities in construction, roadway, things of that nature, which they're having to ship cement up from Chihuahua and they don't want to keep doing that because of the cost. So by building this third kiln, they can increase their daily tonnage of cement production, I believe, by 3,500 tons a day. It's a lot of stuff. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
There was some discussion about, okay.
Oh, there's a, they did add a clause and I meant to highlight that and I ran out and I didn't, on, on property value.
Yes. Where, where's that at? What page?
I'm looking for it right now.
Tom, isn't this the one that can't go below?
20, 20%.
20%, yeah, I think it's like $400 million.
We don't.
Is this the one that's 400 million?
Yeah.
Yes, 400 million. Is it under the covenants?
20% over five years.
And I apologize, I, on a different copy, I've got three of these sitting on my desk and on a different one I had.
So what, what has happened in the past and not just here, it's not unique for us, but when you go out and you wind up doing these type of agreements with, with economic developments, when you have a company and they come in here and hey, we're going to bring in this value, this is what it's going to be worth. Once it's completed and the payments are coming in, then basically go back out to the appraisal districts. Now, if you go to appraisal district, you're going to see rooms and files full of.
Yeah.
Of evaluations being contested. So if you go to page six of 12.
I believe it's six of 12.
Six of 12.7, based on the fact that economic development agreement is based mostly on the taxable property value of capital investment of approximately 400 million for the replacement and upgrade of equipment, existing equipment, if you can agree, this company, if you can company agrees to preset depreciation schedule for added loan tax value of the equipment, notwithstanding forging company covenants agrees to property, the equipment added to the property shall have a minimum taxable assessed value of 320 million. So basically is not going in there and asking for a 20% depreciation. Mostly you will see a 10% if that. But basically this is a kind of linchpin that we wind up getting in our investment back for the investment that we're making. This is something that, you know, over time that's evolved and it was very necessary for us to be able to continue to grow the economic investments that we're getting, returning investment. Also getting the commitment, I mean, they, they're not going anywhere that, they're not going to pick up that whole.
No.
You're not going to pick up that material and move.
No. As long as that quarry is out there.
So nonetheless, this is something that I know that ODC has really discussed to making sure, they really had a, a long discussions with the appraisal value to make sure that we, again, there are, are, so this is something new. I think it's, I think it's a vital tool. So thank you for putting in that. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and I apologize, I meant to have that highlighted, but I'm glad you brought that to the table so y'all understand. And I think they're going to consider that on contracts moving forward or agreements.
Especially when it's, it's coming to this, you know, this, this, this size.
Yeah.
And so I just think it's needed for us to make sure that we wind up getting that, those property values up so we can move past that threshold for our fire department and our, and our police and our avalanche. Council, any other questions? Okay. Tom, anything else on this?
I believe that's it.
Great job.
Thank you.
I won't tell Chris you did better than he did.
But don't tell him I said that.
Okay. Y'all have a good day. Thank you. We're going to move on to item six, discussing review of the approval of the city of Odessa's program year 2023 action plan. Ms. Andoua?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
At our next, your next council meeting, we're going to ask for approval of our 2023 action plan that we have to submit to HUD. The action plan outlines all of the activities that were funded with the last grant that you did in, in June. So, and it tells them what we're going to do and, and how many people we're going to serve and how we're going to make an impact within the city. I hope you all have received your book. And, you know, if you read through there and you have any questions, just feel free to ask me. We just need the approval of council so we can then submit it to HUD so they can approve it and then they can release our, our money for the next year.
Okay, pretty straightforward stuff. Council, you have any questions from Reed on this, at this point? Well, they'll be reading their stuff, so they're going to bombard you with a bunch of questions tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item seven, discuss energy efficiency, conservation, block grant allocation. Seth?
Good afternoon, everyone. If I can get this microphone to stay up, I don't know. So I wanted to bring attention to council and city management of a grant opportunity that city staff was made aware of. Mayor Hovin notified city staff of a new grant opportunity through correspondence from the United States Conference of Mayors, that the city of Odessa had been allocated 165,070 through an energy efficiency and conservation block grant. And I'm going to abbreviate that to EECBG going forward. And that's under the bipartisan infrastructure law. In order to obtain this allocation, the city must submit a pre-award information sheet. What I wanted to present today was my initial findings through the research of the grant possibility and the possible next steps. So the EECBG is offered through the Office of State and Community Energy Program through the Department of Energy. The EECBG is designed to assist states, local governments and tribes in implementing strategies to reduce energy use, to reduce fossil fuel emissions and to improve energy efficiency. The deadline to submit the pre-award information sheet has been extended for all cities to July 31 of 2023. And they recommend that formula-eligible entities, they're encouraging us to submit the, the pre-award sheet as soon as possible to begin the application process. The Department of Energy has also published program guidance to provide more information on eligible uses of the EC, EECBG program funds, share examples of high-impact projects that they're considering and provide a clear link for technical assistance opportunities across a wide range of project areas. I won't go into the big list of those today. I know, I like, you know, y'all like hearing me talk about that stuff, but there's about 14 different categories. So what I would like to do is would city, the city council like staff to pursue this grant opportunity, we'll go ahead and the plan will be to get the pre-award information submitted before the deadline of July 31st. Once we have followed up regarding the application, I'll bring a final amount to the council of what they actually awarded us through that application process. And at that time is when I can go through the eligible, the.
Eligible.
Eligible purposes of the, of the grant itself.
So this, this was sent to me and I get a lot of emails and I was going through this one and I sent it to Seth to look at it. So kind of like how you found out about the Fentanyl. And so we're already in the PSI in order and how we're doing with the LEDs, but also we're doing for our reduction in emissions for the wildcatters and things of that nature. So it's, we wind up making the list of eligible cities. It's 165,000 paid over a course.
Yes.
So it's, I, I just think it's worth a shot. You know, and so I put it on and asked Seth, you know, like nothing else, you know, we wind up getting the last minute and saying, man, this is due by the 31st, no pressure.
Well, good news is, is the form's filled out. I, I just need to.
Yes, so he got it all.
Then take it, take it care of it after this.
He's just seeking the consensus from the council to move forward.
Sure.
It was, it was free money, well, it's not free money, but it's, it's money that we're eligible for.
And I, and I won't bring this back to council next, in two weeks. I will wait until we get the final award later before that comes. So just a heads up there for the council.
So council, do we have a consensus? Seth, move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Sounds good.
Any other questions for me?
That is a federal grant, I'm presuming.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Federal grant, yes.
Do we just want to hear from you when we get it?
Yep, I mean, just be prepared, there's 14 categories of different things and it, and then, you know, it's bulleted points of what you can use it on.
Yeah, sounds good. Good problem.
It is. It is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item, item eight, consider the purchase of a 2025 Volvo BHD with Galbreth roll-off hoist truck for the solid waste department. Mr. Adams? How you doing, sir?
Wonderful. I would like to.
Randy?
No, no, not Randy, it's Hal. Solid Waste Department needs to, due to normal procedures, needs to replace their roll-off truck. It has reached the end of its lifespan, repairs are starting to become extremely expensive, and it is currently due. We submitted to buy board, in my hopes that we could change to Volvo and Mack trucks. They're a little bit more expensive upfront, but they have a much better lifespan due to they were designed for waste hauling and concrete work principally. So the truck that they came back with is a Volvo, and it's $224,249. It will be a 2025 model and will be available the middle to end of next year, second to third quarter of next year.
Wow, that's going to be my question, you know, 30 months for, for weight? That's pretty good.
So.
Counsel, any questions? This is coming out of your existing equipment fund, right?
That is correct, and the one that it will be replacing will be sold at auction.
Okay. You want to go ahead into item nine, consider purchase of auto, automotive services?
Yes, this one, there is one correction on it. The Parks Department, it's not the Parks Department, it's the Traffic Department for the bucket truck. But we'll start with the two F-250s with utility bodies. Those were actually originally awarded to Rush Truck Center for the purchase, but they had no supply for the next two years to be able to fulfill the order, so we resubmitted